Good evening and welcome October 20, 2025, Council of the City of Conshole. Our rise for pledge allegiance led by Councilor Tommy Williams.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I say my invitation, Patrick?
Thank you for allowing me to give this invitation this evening. John 12:26, Jesus says, whoever serves me must follow me; where I am, my servant also will be; my Father will honor the one who serves me. Let's go Lord in prayer. Heavenly Father, I welcome you into this meeting this evening to remind this council that they are not only leaders but also servants of our Lord. For they have been called to serve the common good of all. Grant them the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right and good and true. May they always be guided by the Spirit of community, by the Spirit of justice, by the Spirit of love. Father, grant us the humility to always seek your will in all that we do and say, in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, enough to welcome everyone. We'll begin with a roll call.
Councilman Rob. Councilman Rob.
I'm here.
Councilman Gray.
Present.
Councilman Collins.
Present.
Councilwoman McQueen.
Present.
Councilwoman Barrett.
Present.
Councilman Williams Jr.
Present.
Councilwoman Phillips.
Present.
Okay, everyone has the minutes from the October 6th meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those? Now here to take a motion to approve the minutes.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion second, on favor, signature five, saying aye.
Aye.
Repose same sign. Motion carried. Going on new business, Adam, you want to come up, sir? We have the final reading for ordinance 3999, which is ordinance 7059, the 2026 budget.
Good evening, and I just want to say on behalf of all the department heads, clerk treasurer, mayor, all of you, tonight is the final, final step in what feels like the world's longest budget season from, from the start of kind of what the State House started kind of charting this time really last year. From a procedural overview perspective, if anyone's here from the public or listening, that this is the first meeting. The last regular scheduled meeting was the public hearing. The city budget process really kind of kicks off in May and goes all the way through October. So this has been scheduled through the Form 3, advertised, noticed, et cetera. There's been no changes made since the initial budget was introduced that council has seen. If council takes action tonight and votes in favor of adopting a budget, then everything you have before you would set the sort of spending authority for starting January 1st, 2026 on. If you have any edits tonight, would be the night to make those. Otherwise, the state deadline is really very, very soon, 1st of November is the state adoption deadlines. With no actions taken, the budget reverts to the most recent council adopted budget, which would be 2025 from a procedural standpoint. Things that I would just point out to you as your budget consultant is, one is very challenging budget cycle, the hardest one we've been together yet. Just uncertainty would be a word to put it to. I mean, basically, it took us through August before we had really any revenue estimates, and that was really not anything the city did. That's the, the state law changed, the funding formulas and everything, so that the agencies that provide estimates, they just weren't, you know, they weren't as available as in past years. So work through that. The department heads have been very patient as well, and I think when you look at no new debt taken in 2026, the overall tax rate is expected to actually drop in 2026 as a result of this budget. So all while still creating a net, sort of net budget increase, have just shot at 4% year over year. So from our perspective, we like to see that sort of long-term sustainable growth somewhere between 4% and 6%. You're coming in right on the, on the, on the lower end of that at 4%, so the, all while the federal government's been shut down for several weeks, you all are entertaining an actual budget, operating budget. So I think there's stuff to be, there's always, there's always a silver lining. Is it perfect? Absolutely not. I know that there's a line of department heads that would feel like they, you know, want to continue to do more here, and we will continue to try to continue to work with them to try to figure out how to prioritize and, you know, work through with their operations. But from a fiscal perspective, you know, we're happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, procedurally, you should have a Form 4 for your signature this evening, and then that will be uploaded to the state within the next few days if it's adopted, and that will then be ready for state's review. The way that review process works is if adopted this evening, the state will take a month or two to review it, review all of the estimates. If they agree with everything, they will certify it, and that will become the certified budget. We'll get that notice probably late December, early January. We'll make sure that you all get a copy of that as well, and then that is really the final budget order. That will, will wait, let certify the city's property tax rate that will go out for tax bills next spring. With that, I'll pause to see if you have any questions.
Any questions for Adam? Questions for anybody? Department heads, anybody?
Last thing I'll say is, one of the big estimates this year, this kind of wild card, is the circuit breaker credit. It is a significant assumption for the city. It is the revenue lost to tax caps, and it is a, was a major moving assumption with all the property tax reform and the new home state credits. We have budgeted based on the, the best estimates available today, but it's not an actual amount. We will not know that actual amount until about April 2026. Once we know that actual final amount, we'll make sure that it's included in a status report with you all, because that'll be, it's a significant assumption relative to property tax revenue for next year, which is still your number one revenue source. Okay? Well, I have, thank you.
Quick question on that.
Yeah.
We won't get that till next spring.
Yeah.
What does that mean if it's high or low?
Sure. So if the circuit breaker is higher than we estimated, that means that we get less. The circuit breaker is a credit. So for every, for, for a higher credit, that means we get, the city gets lower net property tax collection that it can actually collect. A lower circuit breaker than we estimated would mean that you would receive more than we otherwise were estimating. We budget on a net basis because that's what we collect and that's what we can pay payroll with and those kind of things. So we have an estimate for gross, we have an estimate for the credit, and then we really budget an estimated net, okay, amount. But there's two big estimates before us, right? At the end of the day, it's a, it's a budget, it's an estimate, it's a projection. So we dial them in as much as we can, but that is a significant assumption, and one that not only will the city want to watch, but every city in Indiana, there's, that was a major, major change this year as a result of that new legislation. So we'll know around April, and once we know, we'll make sure that you all get an update as well, and we're hoping that we're at least in line with where that estimate came in. We have other reserves and contingencies, you know, but that hopefully answers that question.
Just want to make sure everyone understood that.
Yep. Very good. Thank you all so much, and I, if you have any other questions now, or if any of your constituents have any questions, let us know. Otherwise, we'll, we, you know, always, always grateful to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If no other questions, I hear a motion approved pending ordinance 399, ordinance number 7059.
Still moved.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Collins?
No.
Councilwoman McQueen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Barrett?
Yes.
Council, Councilman Williams Jr.?
Yes.
Councilwoman Phillips?
Yes.
Councilman Rob?
Yes.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Okay. Budget for 2026 has been approved. Next item, we have pending ordinance 4003, ordinance number 7063, establishing fund for trust Indiana, was married.
Pending ordinance 4003 is an ordinance creating a fund for the general trust Indiana. Lenny?
Any questions? No questions, or obtain a motion for pending ordinance 4003, ordinance number 7063.
Motion.
Have a motion of second, on favor, signature five, saying aye.
Aye.
Repose same sign. Motion to suspend the rules.
Still move.
Second.
Motion of second, on favor, signature five, saying aye. Repose same sign. Have a motion for third power reading.
Motion.
Have a motion and a second, on favor, signature five, saying aye.
Aye.
Repose same sign. Motion carried. And next, we have item pending, ordinance 4004, which is ordinance number 4064, transfer within cable TV, was married.
Pending ordinance 4004 is an ordinance to transfer within the cable TV budget, moving $4,800 from minor equipment into fringe, moving $2,800 from electricity, electricity into fringe.
Any questions? I obtain a motion approved pending ordinance 4004, ordinance number 4064.
Still move.
Have a motion of second, on favor, signature five, saying aye.
Aye.
Repose same sign. Have a motion to suspend the rules.
Still move.
Have a motion. In a second, on favor, signature five, saying aye.
Aye.
Repose same sign. Have a motion for third final reading.
Motion.
Have a motion of second, on favor, signature five, saying aye.
Aye.
Repose same sign. Motion carried. Item D, we have resolutions 2025-80, 81, 82, 83, all transfers, reimbursement, sorry.
Resolution 2025-80 is a resolution to reimburse $749.99 into police telephone. Resolution 2025-81 is a resolution to reimburse $15 into city hall telephone. Resolution 2025-82 is a resolution to reimburse $200 into DOT vehicle repair. Resolution 2025-83 is a resolution to reimburse $4,000 into council grant expenses.
And motion for resolutions 2025-80, 81, 83.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion of second, on favor, signature five, saying aye.
Aye.
Repose same sign. Motion carried. Moving on to old business, don't have any old business. This is latest business, John, can you bring those maps up again, please?
I want to spend a few minutes just talking about the new layout at the transfer station. The paving is done. We still got some more edging work to do with gravel and stone and stuff, but that'll come as time allows. Paving looks really nice, by the way. They did a great job paving it. The reason we did this was, like, at the Facebook page, we gave a whole reasoning behind it. Before, when you pulled in the transfer station, people would drive around the scales, weigh in, sit down there where number seven is where our new scale house is. Which the WCC built, the high school, by the way, they did a fantastic job. Then they would wait to see someone up there to kind of direct them in. The problem is, people would pull in with five bags or less because they didn't have to weigh, they were just cutting in line, going straight to top, and it was really making people very angry, especially in a long line of people waiting in line. The other thing is, people were getting out, walking up the hill to make the payments. After they dumped, they'd go weigh, then park at the bottom, then walk up the hill, and it created really a hazard, people walking around everywhere. So what we've done is, when paving everything, you can see, we widened the driveway, so it's now the full width of the transfer station. When you pull in, if you have five bags or less, you still go to the right. It's a one-way, all the way around. You bypass the scale, you go to the scale house, you pay the attendant the, the fee, and he'll tell you to dump either door one or door number two. The doors are marked. You can dump, that's when you can get out of your vehicle, and you can leave. Anytime you're on the property, please stay in your vehicle unless you're throwing your trash away. That is a very important safety feature. If you have five bags or more and you got to weigh, you still go to the right, you go to scale your way, the light will turn green when it's time to go. You drive around to the scale house, the scale house attendant will tell you to dump in door number one and door number two. You can go to the left, turn around, there's enough space to turn around now and dump in the appropriate door. When you're done, you exit to the left, you go back, weigh into the scale, and light turn green, go back to scale house, you pay the attendant, and the whole time, you can stay in your vehicle except for when you're dumping your trash. After you pay the tenant, you can exit to the right and leave. You got the one for recycling. So if you have recycling bags, you still go to the right, you bypass the scale, and you can pull up to where number four is, there's, we got a compactor there. The reason we're doing that, five?
Paved.
Oh, yeah, we paved all that up in there. One of the reasons we're doing that is, we were having a lot of material dumped in our recycling dumpsters that should not ever have been dumped in there, and we just had no way of controlling it. So now, the attendant is sitting right there, we have cameras, we can see what's being dumped in there, and so, and it's also, when people come in, go to the left, it's creating a huge bottleneck with people trying to dump, people trying to go with recycling and people walking. So we're trying to eliminate all these bottlenecks so traffic is an easy flow and no one's going to get hurt or injured. So once you dump your recycling, you can then leave. You don't compact anything, you open the door, you throw it in there. You got the next slide with the graphics. This sticker is on the compactor. This shows everything that can be recycled. This is not our wish list. This is what the, the company who takes recycling tells us. It could change. It seems like recycling changes every single year, what they take, what they don't take. The company we use for this has a MRF system, so they actually take more than some because they, they sort their own, which is a fantastic feature, allows us to take more products. The biggest change you'll see in this is no bags, plastic bags. I know for a long as time, we used to buy recycling bags, you'd put your stuff in them and they'd come pick them up, and then even we had our dumpsters, people would throw the bags there, and you cannot throw any bags in there. You can bring your product in the bag, dump it, take the bag home, don't, don't throw the bag in there, because they cannot go in there. So that's really the biggest change, but you can see there's all the products going there, they've got a nice visual graphic, so you can see what can and can't go in. Go back one more slide to the recycling map, if you don't mind, John. So if you have compost material, branches, still please come in, go to the right like normal. You can drive all the way back to the composting site. I know we poured some milling, so you can drive back in there and not go through the bud and everything, so Jeremy did a nice job getting millings back in there. When you're done, this is the, the change on the compost, please, as soon as you leave the compost pile, go to the right, bypass the scales, and drive around so you exit. We don't want a bunch of one-way traffic and then people coming across the grain, causing an incident there. So the only time you'll see something going against one-way will be the semi and the trailer, because sometimes they have to go a certain direction depending on traffic and everything, but we're trying to get that, we want to make some more changes so we can back the trailers in and kind of keep them one-way, but for now, you might see somebody going the wrong direction, they're allowed, they're bringing our trailers in, but we're working on making some changes there. We've cleared up all the water drainage problems we had. I know if you went to the dumpsters before, we had rain, here we're walking through a river, and it just didn't go anywhere, a pond. We've now got the asphalt sloped, it gets away, there's a drain, and it gets to, you might see a little, there's a little bit of standing water this morning, we had rain, and Jeremy said by noon it was cleared up. So it drains very well. So that's the new layout. Please remember to follow the one-way direction, please stay in your vehicle unless you're dumping your, your product, but that scale house is designed to stay in your vehicle, to communicate with the tenant, to pay the attendant, so you never have to get out of your vehicle. So.
I just have one question, and I saw a comment on the Facebook post about shredded paper, because the, the infographic said no shredded paper in the recycling. So I know that we've had shred days before, and I don't know if we've had one recently over a while.
FCN does that. FCN does it. I need to.
Thinking that they did, but I thought, but I feel like the city did it at one.
We did, we used to, but then the bank started doing it, and it was too close together, so.
Yeah.
And that's when we stopped doing it.
Yeah. Trying to get another talks away day coming up, too. Try to go around and seek some funds for those, those are very expensive.
Very expensive.
But I have been hearing there's a lot of people that have paint, some things that don't get taken at the transfer station, they have, and they're starting to collect, so we want to try and at least find a way to provide a talks away day, so the public doesn't try to find, turn the mean of disposing of those items that shouldn't be disposed of. So we are working on it. So hopefully, maybe spring of next year, we can have a talks away day, and then shredding paper, like she said, the banks were doing that, and that's something I'll have to look into. And then really, put a lot of thought into the shredded paper, so one of those businesses that go around now, pick up everybody, so we're looking to.
The one thing with the recycling, too, is for residential customers only.
Yeah. I notice that's kind of a large-scale dumping of boxes, you know, when you're wondering who has that many boxes for residents, so some people are business owners, they're bringing in one truckload a week and filling the dumpster up with broken down boxes. We ask that you do not do that, it's for residential use only. This is the benefit for the, for the assistance there.
A lot of people think we make money on recycling, we do not. It's very expensive to get rid of, and it's really designed for residential use.
The compactor has helped us save money, that we don't have to have as many dumpsters picked up from best way we compact a whole lot more tiny containers, so actually, I would say we're probably, at this point, two to one, I mean, on compacting, so.
I look forward to seeing what the numbers do.
Yeah. I don't think I can have any for probably about three months, because everything's changed so much from waiting, but I think we'll be, it'd be a whole lot easier, or a whole lot better seeing the compactor versus the previous way we're doing it. There's a lot of void still in the container to where that system would be a MAC 200, it has a RAM inside there, and it really compacts that stuff down pretty good, so.
This is five years of work, so.
It took us a long time to just, but what people don't realize is, A, the recycling business kept changing on us, and every time we thought we had it figured out, it changed again, like, okay, start back over. The cost escalated like crazy on us. We reran our trash fee, and as soon as we got it approved, the cost. We reran our trash fee, and as soon as we got it approved, the cost went up big time after that. So we were trying to keep everything as low-cost, feasible, economical as possible. And that's where we got compactors. Well, just getting a compactor is one piece of puzzle now. You got, it's expensive. We knew we had asphalt dryers, all that stuff to do, so was able to figure all that out. So that's, it did take us, it was five years, wasn't it? So a lot of work. Thanks, Jenny, for all your work on that. We, a lot of people worked on that. Does, I think it's going to be much better now. And we, I was telling the board of workers earlier, I was talking, we were in a solid waste district meeting. I asked Commissioner Strong, because he's been around the longest. I was like, when's the last time the transfer station has seen an investment of any type? And he's like, when they built it. Hasn't had one since. So it's good to see that done, and I'm looking forward to seeing how it helps everything go in the future. Any other miscellaneous business? Marla, can you clarify for a second, please? I want to address something, and I just want to make sure she's up here, make sure I get it right. As maybe you saw over the weekend, the fair board made a post that was both unprofessional and completely inaccurate. It appears there was an attempt to use negative publicity as a form of intimidation and influence our decisions. To be clear, the claims that they were not aware of the agreement is completely false. We met with some of the members of the fair board at their request earlier this summer specifically to discuss the agreement, which at time we gave numbers, we gave them a lot of things. Additionally, Marla reached out and offered to attend one of their board meetings to answer any questions they might have. They declined, stating their meeting was not open to public and that she could not attend. Fortunately, we have a process that is very transparent, and that's our park board meeting, which is next Monday night. Give me the timing again, I almost forget.
6:30.
6:30. I would highly encourage you to attend to that because they're going to give a complete conversation of this whole project and what we're doing and the expenses incurred. We're going to go every detail. I tried to keep negotiations behind the scene, but they brought it out. And the very frustrating part to me is, I don't, you can say anything more about me. That's just part of the job. But there are some very mean, ugly things being said about our park director and our assistant park director, and I will not stand for that, especially when it's false. Because they have a perception about what they see on a post that is completely inaccurate. I usually don't come after people like this. I usually bite my tongue. Not this case. You will not go after our employees like this. That is awful. I'm sorry, pure awful. And no wonder no one wants to do this position or that position. So I'm on my soapbox a little bit, and I'm ticked off. Yes, I am. Make fun of me all you want, say whatever you want about me, I don't care. But I draw a line. And there were some very rude things being said about Marla and Kelly I will not stand for.
And our sports director as well.
I have not seen that. So I tend to.
He's been approached by some people as well.
So it's, it's sick, sad that we take something that is not true and accurate, and they just run with it. So I'm sorry if I'm a little passionate about that, a little aggravated by that. Yes, I am. And I'm not going to stand for it. So come Monday night, we will go over everything.
Definitely. And if you have any questions, I mean, I'm prepared to answer anything that you may have. We've been open this whole time with the fair board about all of our concerns, all of the costs that, that we have been accruing since I've been in this position. I have been keeping data on all of this through the years, watching the trends, watching what's happening, and, and sharing it with my park board, sharing it with the mayor, and letting them know what I've been seeing in the trends through the past few years. There's been other issues that we've been having as well. But the main thing that we approached them with was our costs continually are going up. I mean, everybody knows the cost of, of just living is going up. But we have, through the years, supplied everything. We prepare the park for them, we mow it, we get it ready, we clean out all the shelters, all the buildings. Everything's ready for them when they come in. And they, they utilize the park for two weeks while they're there. That means that we provide, we receive no revenue through those two weeks. And through the summer, we almost on a daily basis, not quite every day, we, all of our shelters are rented out. Our buildings are almost always rented out. And so for two weeks, we do not receive any of that revenue that we could. And so they, they utilize the majority of the park. And so we, we've also seen an increase in our utilities and electric bill through the last few years as well. So we presented all of that to them and just shared with them. As we are reviewing our 2026 contract, these are things that we are taking into account as we review it because our expenses are going up. And for 2024, they, for the last three years, have gave us $3,000 as a donation in their, in their request to use those terms. But we were in the negative over $3,000. So that did not even cover the cost. And I, I also, when I look at our data, I include the amount of hours that our employees are working for the fair. So they are preparing the, the park for the fair on a, on a daily basis during the fair. They spend anywhere from four to five hours in the morning gathering all the trash that is accrued from the fair. That is hours that is taken away from our parks. And those are hours that are being taken away from them getting ready for our, getting our ball fields ready for baseball game for the weekend or that night or whatever. It's, it's not being able to mow the soccer fields or another, another park because of them spending at least four hours every day gathering all of the trash, cleaning the restrooms, everything that they do. And so in all of the numbers, I include all of that because that is all hours that the, the fair board is pretty much receiving at no cost on a, you know, a daily basis through the fair. I did total up, if, if we were to charge them like a regular tenant who would call the parks department and rent through us per our ordinance, I went in and scheduled that into our system. So if we were to charge them as a regular tenant, it would be over $24,000 for two weeks. So $6,000 to request to supplement the costs that we accrue through this, I feel like is, is pretty fair, especially when our electric bill has rose. It is, it is trending. We've been watching our electric bills through the last few years. And during the months of July and August, it goes up and then it comes back down. And, and we're accruing into the thousands. And so, and that's the only time that it goes up through the year that we can justify saying this, it's the fair. Because they, they utilize all of our electric boxes in, in the park. So, I mean, I have, I have all records and information. I've tried to be as fair and kind to them, the, our park board as well. We've been reviewing this. This did not just happen. We've been reviewing this contract since our first meeting with the fair board was February 26. So that's when we presented our concerns to them from 2024's fair and the trends that I've been watching since I've been here. And then, and told them, you know, these are things that we have to review. It's, it's not something that we're taking lightly. And we, we are taking everything into consideration. So, you know, I, I welcome anyone to come to our, our board meeting on Monday night. If they are not there, we are still going to, to discuss all of this as a, as a board, as we have been all, all year, and discussing the fair contract.
And your meeting is televised?
Our meeting is public, it's televised, it's welcome. Anyone can come and attend it.
But if they can't attend, they can still watch?
They can still watch it, yes, on, on, and it will be on our Facebook page as well. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate your support. Thank you.
You have it. Thank you, Bill.
Any other miscellaneous business? Anybody from the pub you want me to say? You guys are just sitting there beside me.
Halloween.
Oh, yes, Halloween. Got distracted by my conversation. 31st from 5 to 7 p.m. is Halloween. Now I'll make a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion. Might mention, since, you know, from the first hour, just here, announced that they're going to have that at the Corales parking lot.
They're organizing, I'm not sure, they're going to do more than just, but they're going to be in the parking lot from 5 to 7 that night as well. They're doing truck and trailer businesses. Take a motion for adjournment.
Motion.
Have a motion a second, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Have a good evening.